Good evening. Welcome to the September 11th, 2018, meeting of the River Falls Common Council. Before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, I'd like us to take a moment of, have a moment of silence in remembrance of 9/11. At this time, I'd ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. A clerk, please call the roll.
Beerstedt, Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morsett.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Watson.
All right. Next, we'll have the approval of the minutes from the August 28th, 2018, regular meeting minutes, uh, regular meeting minutes.
I move approval of the August 28th minutes.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Next, we'll have the approval of bills with Mr. Downing.
Mr. Council President and Council, I move for approval in the, for our bills in the amount of $1,233,043.69, subject to the comptroller.
Second. Second for Mr. Beerstedt. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Bills are passed. Move into public comment section. We do have a couple of scheduled things in public comment, but before we do that, is there anybody in the audience who has anything that they would like to talk about before the council this evening that is either on the agenda or not on the agenda? Anyone at all? I think we're supposed to call this three times, is what I was told, so... Seeing none, we will move on to change of agent for the We Market Co-op, Doing Businesses as Whole Earth Cooperative of River Falls. Anybody have any questions for the agent? I have my questions for the agent. If she wouldn't mind, is it Ms. Alport? Would you mind coming up, please, to the podium? Thank you for appearing tonight. I have three standard questions I always ask every agent regardless of what their facility, what their operation is. Do you understand the role of an agent and what it means?
Yes.
You understand that if you're not present and there's an alcohol-related violation, you are held liable?
Yes.
Do you have your responsible bartender's license, or bar service's license?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions for her? No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, I will make a motion that we approve the change of agent for the, for the Whole Earth Co-op.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a first and a second. And any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next, we'll have the EMS Board Report from Ms. Carol Motesz, the EMS Board President.
It's always lovely to come here and report the great things that we've been doing in our previous year. So, with that, I'll start with the presentation. At the moment, we have 24 paid-on-call volunteers, nine full-time paramedics, 15 part-time paramedics, and five casual paramedics, with one full-time EMS director. And I thought I would take the opportunity tonight to give you a little bit of historic perspective. Because when I left the agency at the turn of the century, in 1999, and built the ambulance building, that was my last achievement with the service, our goal was 24 para, uh, 24 volunteer EMTs, and we were, we had all volunteer leadership. And it was actually after I left the service that then we hired Jeff to take over in a leadership position. So even though that has been 19 years, in a sense, that's a fairly short period of time, and you can see that enormous strides have been made since that time. Operations, we now have five ambulances back in those dark ages that we thought were very enlightened. We had two. We had one new ambulance and one that we hoped would work, and usually it did. We didn't have any paramedics, quick-response vehicles, no Bobcat, and no command operations trailer. So when you look at the budget that's coming up in a little while, you know, I hope there'll be a nice appreciation of the fact of why the budget is as it is, because we really have made some spectacular improvements over those years. EMS calls by year, at that time, we averaged about 300. And you can see now that in 2017, we had 20, 2,160. The calls have just gone up exponentially. And types of calls, 911, we've always had 911 calls, inter-facility, we didn't do any inter-facility transfers at that time because there wasn't a need to do that. There were other services that provided different services, but that's something that we do now. Standby, we've always done standby. The ALS intercepts, we didn't have anything to intercept with, so there were no intercepts. Mutual aid coverage, that is, I'm very proud of the fact that since my association with the ambulance service, beginning in 1984, we've always had a very nice relationship with our neighbors. Because sometimes we have been in need. In the earlier days, when I was involved, it was more often Hudson that would respond to our needs, and now we more often respond to our neighbors' needs, and we feel very strongly that's the right thing to do. And then the special events standby, that with the insurance demands over the years, that, that has increased definitely. We have always, well, we always used to go to the rodeo all the time, but that was more because we really wanted to go than we were actually needed. It was really fun. Community served, Troy, Connect, Pleasant Valley, Warren, the townships associated with the River Falls have always been part of our service, but then we're very happy to announce that we have included Prescott in the last few years, and they're very happy to have a relationship with us. Mutual aid responses has been, Amory has been added. We didn't ever go to Amory because we just didn't have the, the vehicles, or the personnel to do that. And so now, sometimes we do go as far up as Amory. And about 150 mutual aid calls a year. This is at least three times what we used to do, but then, of course, back in the late 1980s, we were, we weren't a fledgling EMS service, certainly, but we, we just had more needs than we had personnel at the time, because we, again, we were growing fair, what we thought was fairly rapidly at the time. And the budget, very impressive budget. We can't thank you enough for funding the ambulance service at the level that you do in meeting and, and sort of touching base with citizen in our community. The fact that we have a critical care, the only critical care service on this part of the state, our citizens are very, very grateful for this. And we have got some just wonderful success stories that we could share with you that has sort of proven that this has been the right decision. But without that funding from the city council and support from our citizens, we couldn't have that. Because like everything else, it all costs money, and it is a fairly expensive endeavor. So I just really can't thank you enough for that. Reimbursements and fee structure, I'll let you read at your leisure, but we do always like to sort of look at, okay, we've got this impressive budget, where does the money come from? Where should the money come from? That is a decision that we sort of make on an annual basis. To what extent can we rely on insurance? To what extent can we rely on Medicare? To what extent can we rely on individuals? And that's something that we don't take for granted, that we really do study every year, to make sure that we're doing the right thing for everybody. Community outreach and involvement, one of the nice things about having a larger staff is that we really do get out in the community a lot. I'm very, very proud of our service for the fact that they look for opportunities to get out into the community. I think it makes our community safer. It empowers our members in the community to do the right thing. If there is a medical emergency, and to really sort of help children know, recognize a medical emergency, know what to do at that time, and to sort of call the appropriate services. I'm, I'm just, I'm, that is a wonderful piece that we have really expanded over the years. Department changes, one of the things with the demands on our service, primarily because of the number of calls, back at the turn of the century again, because we had so few calls, relatively speaking, for, we, we had about 300 calls for 25, 24 EMTs, even though we were all volunteer, the call load was manageable by people who worked within the city limits. And so people could leave their job, that, you know, the employer said, sure, you know, go and, go on the ambulance call, or go on that fire call, and then come back and continue working. Because maybe they did that once a week, or sometimes once every couple of weeks, but now with the enormous number of calls, even with the additional EMTs, employers would be letting their employees go, having to let them go, maybe two, three, four times a week. And as for employers, that just is not sustainable for, for their businesses. And so volunteers are on the decline, and so we do have a plan for replacing the volunteers with full-time and part-time EMTs and paramedics, and that really is, Julie has been incredibly helpful with that, with that model. And so that's something that we'll continue to do, because I think those of you who are business people in town, I think will appreciate the fact that to have somebody, you know, Michael, I'm not sure you'd want one of your dentists in the middle of a procedure to say, excuse me, I'll be right back. And three hours later, the person's still in the chair, still waiting for somebody to come back. So that, that is, that, that sort of is a little bit of our current challenge. It's everybody's challenge everywhere. It's a, it's a national issue, even though, for those without critical care, because we, the, the demand is higher. Those of us in our gentle years of life, just call the ambulance more often. So if we did, because of this and, and some other concerns that we had, we thought that it was time to conduct a feasibility study last year, that gave us some very, very nice results. And one of the thoughts was to combine us with fire, bring fire on board. But right now, one of the things that we, I articulated at the time, is that I do understand and appreciate national models, but in River Falls, we don't necessarily need to follow national models, because I think sometimes models would prefer to follow us. So we're, we're not going to go with a national model just because it's a national model. We're going to continue to monitor this and see what is the best way, and the most cost-effective way of providing services in River Falls, and, and sort of, and go from there. And of course, with our new director, Jason, who we are extremely pleased to have with us, he'll sort of do some, he brings a very different perspective from his background, and so we're looking forward to him taking some time to review what we have, what we do in River Falls, and then, from that, make some recommendations. So department updates, we do have a medical, a new medical director, and the piece that is, is different, we've always had to have a medical director, and in the past, one of the doctors at the clinic had been very, very kind to take on this load at no cost to themselves. And over the years, that worked okay. The feds had fewer guidelines and requirements for a medical director, but that, like everything else, has changed. And so Dr. Duran, she is an emergency care specialist, and so that is a nice luxury that we have at the moment, that we have an emergency care specialist, that is the only thing that she works with as our medical director. And then Jason is fresh on board and moving quickly. Operational changes, implemented a bimonthly meetings because the department's working so well, we don't need to meet every month, although we do exercise the option of meeting more often if we need to. Added, we approved an additional critical care component offered by Alina. Alina has become a very nice partner with us, which is much of a change over what happened at the turn of the century. So we're happy to sort of encourage that. There is a, if you haven't seen it, you have to go in the ambulance bay and see their medicine dispensing unit. It's just like a fast-food machine at the airport, although you have to have a code to get in. And so the nice thing about that is that it really, it does inventory control for all of the, the high-test meds. It's very, very impressive. And I'm just very pleased with that, because we always have to be very, very, very careful that the, the high-test meds that we have, that, that they are controlled, that we know where they are, they know, we know what's been done with them, and, and for replenishing them too, that we have that inventory control. But I was impressed. And then Wi-Fi to all the ambulances, I just almost have to laugh at this, because I remember in the days where we couldn't always get phone service to the hospital. So now to have the Wi-Fi, that, that'll just make a really big difference, because some of the reports can be sent from the ambulance directly to the ER, and that, so then they get that information ahead of time, which is great. And LifePacks have got down, download capabilities into run charts, so we don't have to try and read each other's meat, reading, writing, well, I think he meant this, but... So it, we, we really do have a state-of-the-art ambulance service in River Falls that I am just supremely proud of. I'm very proud of you for funding it. I'm very proud of the service, for the quality of people that we have, and we, we just have a very bright future ahead of us for people that need our services. And the EMS Advisory Board, we did, if you remember, we did change last year into an advisory board. And so we don't have any particular decision-making powers, we're more advisory. But I like to think of us as being the public face of EMS in River Falls. People stop me often to ask questions about the ambulance service, and I'm always happy to give them really great feedback. But, and I know that I have met with Jason already, and he's looking forward to working with us, and, and in an advisory capacity, just to give him and the department some public feedback. I mean, it, it's really democracy in, in action, I think. So tonight, we have Hal Watson is our council representative, and Ken McNiff, he's our Prescott representative. And Ken has got a long history with EMS in Prescott, so we're just thrilled to have him on board. Kent was, was going to try and sneak in if his other meeting finished, but it wasn't. Judy Edgar was a county nurse for many years. Gary Donath has been on our advisory board for quite some time. And Jeannie Wispertal, there. Missed off, where, where are you? She was traveling, so she missed the photo. So my, I guess the summary of my report is all is well with the ambulance service, and I thank you for your support.
Anybody have any questions?
Questions? Yes. Next one.
Not going to get away with that, easy. Any questions? Kind of, you look like you want to say something. No?
You know where we are if you change your mind.
Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we will have the Fire Department presentation, keeping in the public safety theme, with Assistant Chief of Operations. Is that right, Ed? Oh, he's busy.
First of all, I didn't realize how to stand still up here. I'm used to just kind of walking around, so when I heard that, oh, boy. Chief Nelson can't be here tonight. He had a family commitment out of state, and so I'll do my best to try to represent him in the department. My name is Ed Black, I'm the Assistant Chief for Operations. This is the best second job in the world. And it's fitting, as was mentioned, today is Patriot Day. I suspect everybody in this room knows exactly what they were doing 17 years ago. And for the fire service, it's a, it's a day that we never forget, and obviously, for a lot of citizens who were killed that day, we'll never forget that day. It was just inconceivable, 343 firefighters, number of thousands of civilians. That was the flag we put up last year. We tried to do that this year, but because of the wind conditions, we couldn't do that, so we had a smaller flag. But our latter was out on Second Street this afternoon and this morning. I think everybody remembers these photographs, the one from September 11th, the other one from a year later. So again, it's fitting that we're here tonight, and I hope you all had a chance to take a little moment to reflect. And I apologize, this is our St. Craig County test, so... The mission of the department, I'm not going to read this to you. Another one of the members and I frequently talk, and we say, we are a public service. We're a fire service. That's what we do. This is nice legal mumbo jumbo, and I shouldn't say that, because I'm a judge, but that's what, I mean, we represent, obviously, the city of River Falls, and we serve the surrounding townships. And every member, and we now have 42 active members, average years of service, 15 years. We train every Monday night from 6:30 to 9:30. We emphasize, except for holidays, we emphasize training for true emergencies. And if you wonder what that is, I'll give you two examples. About a month ago, we had an accident outside of town, there was a vehicle, it landed on its roof, and when I got there, in our chief's vehicle, another one of the members who's on EMS was there, and he said, we need to get these people out right now. And a true emergency is, you don't have the time to say, you know, should we do this, this? You just have to do. And we got one individual out right away, the other individual, we had to get the door off the side, and I was really very proud of our membership. I mean, they got the equipment out, set it up, got it off, got the person out. Couldn't have asked for more. First week of August, we had a fire on the second floor of a duplex, and again, you get there, and it's, well, what do you think we should do? No. You've got to get this fire out. You've got to get in there, and the door is locked, just get in. So that's a true emergency, and obviously, we're very lucky. We don't have those types of situations every day, and we average about 275 calls a year. In meeting the mission, we do that, obviously responding to our pager going off, public safety education, and also code enforcement, doing inspections. These are the number of calls in the last six years, and they're probably hard to see from this, but last year, I think we had 200 and some. The one that's in pink was 2012, that was 300 and some, and you might ask, why is there a difference? Well, if you can tell me why the pager's going to go off in the next hour, I'll let you know. Part of it may be that the university had to change and upgrade in their alarm system, so we don't have as many alarms at the university, but other than that, when we hear these pagers, we don't know what they're going to say. Public safety education, I think everybody who's heard the name Pauline Williams, she heads our public safety education. Primary functions are the open house, and by the way, I'll give you more information about that, that's in a couple of weeks. School education, we serve many, many thousands of students, and we have community events. Code enforcement, Assistant Chief Mike Moody basically heads this. We also have Tom Foley, Captain Tom Foley, Molly Foley, Captain Doug Rudisso, and I probably forgot somebody, and I, if I did, I apologize, but they do a lot of inspections and enforcement of the code provisions. Highlights in the last year, Mike Feck, firefighter's name, firefighter of the year, that's him and his wife in the upper-left-hand corner. Frank Holter, been a fixture in the department for many years, retired after 43 years. Accomplishments, and again, ISO inspections, that's the Insurance Services Office. And the lower that number in that class three, the better for everybody and their insurance costs. Four gas meter, these are meters we go on, we have environments, the atmosphere, we're not sure what it is, be it carbon monoxide, hydrogen sulfide, et cetera, to make sure it's safe. National night out, and we recently passed a state fire department audit. Our goals in the upcoming future, review of our organizational structure, Chief Nelson recently had one-on-one meetings with every person in the department, asked them, what do you think? What are your complaints? What are your suggestions, et cetera? And he just sent out an email before he left with the bullet points of what information he got, and I think it's good. We will do specifications through a new engine. We have a currently Engine 15, which I think was purchased about three years ago, in the process of doing specs on a new one. Volunteer recruitment, that's kind of all the time. Officer training and succession training. I keep telling Chief Nelson, he can't retire, but he says he won't be here for the rest of his life. We have more information, the annual report, and I think you got a copy of that. Open house is September 24th, 5 through the 8 o'clock, and we have displays, all kinds of information, et cetera. So, and free food. Any questions?
Any questions for Assistant Chief?
I have a quick question. How do new state laws regarding inspections, how do you feel about how they affect the job performance of the fire department?
I have to understand, my first job as a judge, I'm not sure if I understand your question.
So, in some of the newer laws regarding renters and inspection, they're saying that they can't require people to be inspected. Does, in your opinion, in your professional opinion, does that impede your ability to do your job, or does it create a potential hazard for you?
I look at that as two separate questions, because obviously, when it comes to state laws and administrative codes, we don't pass those. We don't adopt those. Many of those are national codes, state codes, state laws. That's beyond. We have city ordinances, and whatever authority the city has, I think Mr. Moody usually has pretty, a lot of contact to make some suggestions, but beyond that, I'll be frank with you. We get a call, I'm not thinking, is this place up to code? Now, when we get there, we have access to the inspection information that the inspectors have in their computers, and so if we can, we can go into that and say, what is it about this building, or what's being stored here that we should know about? But beyond that, that's not usually the first thing on my mind when I get a call, so... And sometimes, maybe it should be, but usually, I'm wondering, is there somebody in there? Are they safe? And et cetera.
But it hasn't created, like, more of a demand for necessity for the department itself? Yet, I should say.
I would say the person that asked that question is either the chief or Mike Moody. To my knowledge, I don't think so, but again, I don't want to speak for the entire department, or Chief Moody, or Assistant Chief Woody, Chief Nelson on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thanks, Ed.
Best second job in the world. Okay. Thank you.
Very much. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Number five is a resolution accepting the public improvements for Villas of Sterling Ponds Phase III. Adopting this resolution would formally accept ownership of the public improvements by the city and start the warranty period for the Villas of Sterling Ponds Phase III. Number six is a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment police powers under Section 66.0703 of the Wisconsin statutes for the benefit of the River Falls Business Improvement District. Adopting this resolution would authorize proceeding with special assessment for the downtown business district known as the bid. Does anybody have any of these that they'd like to pull?
Like to pull number six?
Mr. Gagne pulls number six.
Mr. Council President, I'd like to pull Consent Agenda, item number five.
All right. Mr. Downing pulls number five, so we will go in order, and I'll go back to Mr. Gagne, Mr. Downing, and let you go forward with five.
All right. And that's a resolution accepting the public improvements for Villas for Sterling Ponds Phase III. I pulled it because I just want a clarification, and I believe there is a typo in the packet where it says Phase II, or it should say Phase III under the subject line. So, and the resolution reads correctly in Phase III, so I'm in approval for it, but just so everyone understands, this is Phase III of the project, so... With that, I move approval, Consent Agenda, item number five.
All right. So we have a first and a second. Downing, Odine. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That passes. Mr. Gagne, you pulled number six.
I guess I have a couple of questions for administration, or somebody on staff. Can somebody give me, so the public has a background here, what, how was, how'd this come to be? Was, was it a city-oriented measure, or was it the business owners that came forward and thought about doing something like this?
That's a lot of loading questions.
I guess that question's for me, right? 1988, 1989, somewhere in there, I believe it was a proposal from downtown businesses. I'm pretty sure that they requested this. It did have to be approved by the city council at the time, and it, and it is annually approved. That's why it's in front of you tonight, but I'm pretty sure it came from the downtown businesses. And I'm sure that not everyone agreed with that. As you know, that's, it's a segregated area, it's drawn on a map, so I'm sure there was discussion about whether to implement or not.
Right. You know, I'll add in there, I, I think this program does, has done a lot for businesses downtown, and it has done exactly what it's made to do, is beautifier downtown, and I have received calls from people over the course of my terms on council that haven't necessarily been in favor of getting taxed. that haven't necessarily been in favor of getting taxed above their taxes on paying for other people's projects. Because people build brand-new buildings, they put a ton of their own money into these projects and um, they don't necessarily reap from it. And if they do, it's kind of minimal compared to what they're putting in in the end. My question to staff, when was the last time, or has there been a time since this was implemented, that there's been maybe a, um, survey done? Uh, and I know nobody's gonna want to put their name on it, but maybe we could put an anonymous survey out there to the business owners and see if this is something that they want to carry forward. Um, I think that would be a great, uh, great measurement tool, just to see if, if it's something that has a good majority of carrying on.
I think, go ahead, Mr..
Oh, no, I was just going to say perhaps that's a question for, um, Ms. Larson, who's the president of the bid, the, uh, bid board. Um, there actually is a board that is responsible for interacting with business owners.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm totally where I think Ms. Larson comes before the city council every year and gives us a nice little update and, you know, like I said, I appreciate the work they've done. I just think it'd be a good time for that board to engage the businesses downtown and see if it's something that we would carry on, on, on that totality. Every one of them that I've talked to said they love the flower baskets, they love the general stuff, but they don't necessarily think it's a great idea, from the couple of people I've gotten calls from, um, to take their money and pool it with somebody else, um, to do their facade and updates or whatever they have going on. So, that's my thought. With that, I move for approval of number six.
Second.
Alright, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion?
Um, I would just, um, mention that there really isn't a lot, any other money being spent on downtown River Falls as, as far as economic development or, or quote-unquote beautification, which is really a, a program to help keep these older buildings, um, looking good. And so, you know, we spend money in a lot of different places all over town using the levy, using taxpayer dollars from, from, uh, everyone who, who lives here. And I think having some kind of focus on downtown is a really positive thing for the economy here. Foot traffic, bringing people in for bacon bash and everything else that we do and um, so I'm in, uh, I just really support this and any other efforts we can make to invest in our downtown. And I think the fact that the businesses, uh, that are in the bid district, participate in this program is a real sign of strength for the downtown, so I'm in favor of it.
I would agree with Mr. Watson. I think, um, there's, there's a, a lot of different things that they do with that project. Uh, they re-tuck point buildings, they do lighting, they do signage, um, they do new windows and doorways and things like that. It is a self-policing board. Um, they do have a good relationship with a lot of the business owners downtown. Uh, they also have a good relationship with the chamber that folds into that, so it's a, it's a wonderful program and I've heard from those folks too and I know who they are and I could.
I think we all have.
Probably all have. And, uh, and I understand their point of view and, and, uh, but I think it's, uh, one of those benefits for the good of, good of all and it's, it's a relatively inexpensive levy, for lack of a better word, that we're, that they're self, that they're self-putting on. But, Mr. Page, did you have something?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I operate a business in the Business Improvement District and we have participated in the program, uh, since nineteen eighty-eight. And we recently utilized the program to update the facade on our building and it was an amazing improvement and in no way did we recoup the expenses of the assessments that we've paid throughout the past, but I would encourage individuals that are not in favor of the bid but operate in businesses in, within the bid to participate in the process, you know, um, join the committee or show up to meetings of the committee and provide that feedback directly to them. And then engage in the opportunities of writing grants to receive monies for their businesses because certainly, um, you know, if they're not seeing the money coming back to them, if they're not seeing the improvements in their properties, there's probably opportunity for them to do so. Um, I'm surprised that the assessment is so little. I think that it's a, a great program and it does do wonders for bringing people to our downtown when it looks nicer along our main street, for sure.
I think I reiterated that, I, I think it's done a lot of great work. Um, I'm not discounting that, I just think it would be a bad idea to reassess that if it was initiated by business owners. Maybe from time to time, you, you reassess that and do an anonymous survey, how many people are saying they, they don't want to do it? How many people are saying they want to do it? Because if you get a good majority, you know, that's, that's kind of a, a tell. But if you get a lot of people that still love the program and you get a select few, well, sorry. You know, you continue on with it. But I think the people that you hear from, it kind of gives them that feel that, "Hey, my voice was heard, I got to put it on paper, I'm not just being strung through the mud and forced to do it," but put it back in their shoes again in twenty-nineteen.
Okay?
Just a point of clarification, uh, council members, so this is the preliminary notice of intent, so that essentially this provides a formal opportunity for any objector to the.
To step forward.
District to step forward, um, understanding that there may be reasons they don't want to, but that certainly they've, they've got essentially a mini referendum, well, not essentially a referendum, but directly a referendum every, um, every year it's been in place because the way that bid language works in statute is if a certain threshold of business owners are not in favor of it, it's defeated. So you have to have a majority based on number of parcels or value of parts, uh, property in that area to, to do the special assessments. Essentially, they're, the, you're using this police powers, in this case, the police powers means doing, you know, making somebody do something that they maybe not be voluntarily doing, yet the mechanism essentially to get it going is voluntary. You have to get enough volunteers to say, "Yes, we want the city to do that." And so, understand the points heard this evening, um, but we would encourage any property owners that are not in favor of the bid to use the mechanism they have in place, which is, you know, they essentially can formally, um, protest that. Plus, there's the informal opportunity to be part of the bid decision-making, so.
The, the fun caveat with that is some of the people that have reached out to me actually have utilized it because it's their dollars. Um, but in the end, if they didn't have to pay into it, they wouldn't pay into it. You know, so that's kind of the, the double-edged sword is, they're, they're paying into it all these years, they're gonna take advantage of it if it's in place, so it's, it's kind of a weird twisted deal, but, I mean, that's, that's where if you do an anonymous, um, not to beat that horse here, but if you, uh, do an anonymous survey of all those business owners in there, they can actually have a real voice and not be putting their name or their, their face out there, necessarily be boycotted or whatever else.
Understood, but I, I'm not hearing, I guess we would, staff would want to hear if there's additional direction, uh, if the council wants to direct us to do that, otherwise we're, I want to clarify that staff wouldn't be planning to do, we'll be making sure the clerk has a responsibility to make sure that all the notices go out, that the report is, is out there, but, um, we hadn't planned any surveying, which we can do if the council would like us to do.
I think this is a, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I would, I would, I would just say that I would, I think that is something that the bid board should address first.
I would agree. It's a self-policing organization, I would, I would want it to start with them.
Yep.
So, okay, uh, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, passes. Uh, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance, uh, number seven, ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash thirteen, to amend the official zoning map by rezoning two-point-five acres of land in the Sterling Ponds neighborhood from industrial district to traditional neighborhood development district. This is a first reading, uh, of this ordinance to rezone the land in Sterling Ponds neighborhood. The second reading is scheduled for September twenty-fifth. Are there any questions that anybody has for staff or any comments at this point? Nope? Okay. Moving on, administrator's report, uh, we have got the administrator's report in the packet. Have you got any questions for Scott? I do, but go ahead if anybody else does.
While you're thinking of your other questions, September fifteenth to sixteenth is the sixth annual bacon bash. This event is sponsored by the River Falls Chamber of Commerce and located here near City Hall at Heritage Park. September twenty-fourth is, was mentioned at five-thirty, um, I believe five-thirty to eight, uh, the fire department annual house. I know that the fire department, um, would welcome you to come for as little or as much time during that time as you are able to. Um, there's, there's, uh, fun, uh, opportunities for all ages and chances to, uh, kind of have a street party with your neighbors, um, in honor of the fire department. September twenty-seventh from six to eight is the Kinney Corridor Project Open House in the lower level of the library. Uh, the preliminary planning concepts will be ready to share with the broader community in a public workshop. Um, there will be a short program at six forty-five that will include displays, um, with the planning items and then they'll offer some opportunities for, uh, community members to provide the planning team with additional input and feedback about the concepts presented. There, this is the first of at least two workshops that are planned, uh, so this will be the first one and a second workshop is planned for later this fall. October second, twenty eighteen, um, at the UWRF campus is the Run With Cops events, um, that the River Falls Police Department will be, uh, members of the police department will be participating in. Information is at www dot runwithcops dot org. Um, that event is an evening event, um, five o'clock and everything concludes at eight or, uh, nine o'clock, including, uh, the opportunity to, uh, do five K run walk, uh, separate kids dash an obstacle course and two opportunities to participate in a donut eating contest, cops versus kids and.
And that's not to be confused with the Run From The Cops program, which is totally different, right Chief?
That's right.
Uh, Scott, I have a question. Could you, and I think this is where Mr. Downing was headed when, when Assistant Chief Flack was up there, but could you expand a little bit on the rental inspection program and the change that has been foisted upon us by the state and, and what that means? Uh, we get calls periodically, uh, from residents or from concerned renters about different things and why aren't we doing a proactive approach to these inspections? So if we could maybe get a little.
You're okay with like a two-minute high-level overview?
All we need.
I think I'd rather provide you in writing a little more detail if we wanted to get in, in the weeds a little bit, but from my perspective in that, um, I think it's shared by, uh, some of the staff members involved. The, the state has suggested that cities are, um, either too aggressive or, um, involved in areas in which there, there isn't a clear, in the state's mind, a clear public safety um, trade-off. So there is quite a bit of changes, um, that have occurred, um, and that we frankly still have to reflect in some of our ordinances and things that have reduced our ability to do proactive, um, inspection, primarily what people think about is we've got to do something about these rental properties. Um, we had already had a, a more uniform rental program in town, meaning it didn't matter if it was student housing or, or non, but we did treat rental properties differently than, than owner occupies. Um, the law is tending towards treating rentals like owner occupies, meaning, um, unless there's some glaring public safety, um, reason to be, um, inspecting the property or the owner voluntarily asks you to come inspect the property, essentially they want the city out of, um, out of the way. That's, that's a pretty broad generalization about the direction we're headed, but, um, there's been a few case law examples of cities that have had, you know, kind of had more restrictions on their ability to do it. The law does carve out some specific abilities for cities to declare zones, inspection zones based on complaints or other conditions, we're looking at that as possibility. Um, and we're frankly letting other cities be the guinea pigs to see how things, things go. Um, as you recall, we did, some of you recall, we did a study on comparative property values and, um, police complaints and code enforcement on some test, you know, kind of test neighborhoods, holding them, um, or sample neighborhoods or control neighborhoods. It wasn't that scientific, but, and we didn't find a significant data variability in certain areas that everybody was assuming that there was problems in second to Seventh Street by the campus or over by, um, behind like Dick's Market, those areas, and we didn't find a lot of variability in that. We do not have a, again, overgeneralizing, but we don't enforce a very strict property maintenance code in River Falls. So we don't go out and say, "The paint is peeling, therefore you should paint it immediately." Certainly, we have some ability, if we think it's lead paint and it's causing health and safety issues, we can do that, but, um, we're a little more laissez-faire by, by nature in River Falls. And certainly, we made some council policy decisions about seven, eight years ago to be a little more laissez-faire, um, and complaint-based, but now we're even losing some of the ability to do the complaint-based, uh, inspection. So, it's something we're monitoring, we're putting together a summary, um, we expect the planning commissioner will have to have some discussion about what direction they want us to take. I would tell you though, the strategy right now is not to lead on the issue, so. Um, Oshkosh has been out ahead of other cities, Beloit, Wisconsin is ahead of other cities, kind of seeing what Milwaukee certainly has an aggressive, um, irritated approach to. Um, the state taking away home rule powers basically for you to declare what you think is a public health, welfare and safety issue in the community. We don't have a landlord association in River Falls, a formal association, so we haven't had any discussions with them, there isn't one to have discussions with. Some cities are having discussions with their landlord association about what the future looks like. So it's, it's become increasingly difficult to have any kind of proactive enforcement and even some of the reactive enforcement is, um, changing rapidly, is the best way to put it. And the cost recovery is, is pretty substantially weakened, so I think there is some idea that if, if it costs cities more than they can recover in fees to do programs, that they'll drop them. Um, because you'd essentially have to subsidize your inspection programs in order to, to do them, because you, there's limitations on the amount of fees you can charge the actual property owners for the inspections.
So more to come, report down the road maybe?
Yeah, more to come. I mean, there's been, there's, there is, I think Assistant Chief Flack put it well, I mean, there's, staff has to be careful because we get a little numb to it. There's always stuff that is being changed and taken away, so to speak, from cities over time, that's consistent, I think. This was one that looked like it probably needs some attention, um, from staff. Drawing, being able to give you advice about if we should draw a line in the sand and say that's, you went too far is still, still I think relatively debatable. But even health and life and inspections of smoke detectors and stuff, a lot of that is still in, in place, but even that has become a little bit more complicated to do. Um, and it's, jury's still out on whether that's gonna have long-term public safety implications. Everything we do has a cost and a benefit, as you understand in your role as a city council, so we haven't judged yet where they're at, but there is some irritation, generally speaking, across the state by cities that this is an unreasonable impingement on our home rule ability to make good judgment locally about what's important to us and what's not. And it basically is a statewide approach to leave landlords alone, as far as my reading.
I think, I think letting somebody else be the trailblazer is just fine by me, so.
We are monitoring conditions though, to make sure that in the meantime, things aren't getting significantly worse. And like I said, if you're living next to a house that you believe is getting worse, your perspective may be differently, but different, but on a whole, the city is looking at their neighborhood saying, "You know, actually, we're getting reinvestment, we're getting some repairs, we're getting some conversion from multifamily to single-family." There's some good signs and there's also some bad signs and so we're, oh, on the whole, we don't think everything is falling apart because of these law changes, but, um, the economy's good, property values are up, so there's some things that are help, helping now that if things go the opposite direction, we could be back where we have trouble, um, additions in some neighborhoods.
Okay.
That help answer the question?
Yep. Anybody else have anything for Scott? Alright, moving on, the, next is closed session. Uh, we will recess into closed session per Wisconsin state statutes for the following purpose. Nineteen point eight-five-one E, deliberating or negotiating. Nineteen point eight-five-one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to wit the purchase of property for public safety. So, I need a motion?
Mr. Council President, I move that we recess into closed session.
Second. Mr. Watson, Mr. Beerstead, we need a roll call vote, please.
Odine?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Gagne?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Beerstead?
Yes.
Page?
Yep.
We are in closed session.